November 11, 2022, at 6:19 PM. Apologies for being a little bit late. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our student board member, Elliot Helfman.
Okay.
Okay. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Elliot. And then I'm going to have roll call. Trustee Barnas. Vice President Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
I am present. Clerk Benegas.
Present.
Trustee Pazadi.
Present.
Student Board Member Elliot Helfman.
I am also present.
Oh, perfect. So announcements of actions taken in closed session. Government Code Section, I forgot to announce it earlier. 549, uh, five, six point nine D two pending or potential litigation. Information received. Direction provided. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Uh, information received. Government Code Section 549, uh, five, seven point six, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CCA, and Management. Information received. So, um, do I have, uh, approval of the agenda? We may or may not have an amendment, yes? So that we don't have somebody waiting?
Yes, I would like to ask if we could move the, uh, consent agenda, um, right before our information items.
Do we have any objections to that? Seeing that are none, I'll, um, I'll entertain a motion, any other amendment? No other amendments from the board or otherwise? Okay. Seeing that are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the amendment of, of moving O before N.
Move as amended.
A second.
Hey, Trustee Pazadi moved. Clerk Benegas seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. You have your agenda with an amendment. So moving on to item J, Communication Celebrations, Recognition of Dia de los Muertos, featuring the River City High School banda and Ballet Folclorio. All right, Ms., uh, Principal Billingsley, are...
Principal Billingsley couldn't be here, so Stan's going to introduce the item.
Oh, but as he hops up. So, okay. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. We're very lucky here tonight. Uh, we have the wonderful folclorico dancers, uh, here from River City High School. Uh, so we'll let them get on and do their thing because I know we can't wait to see it.
Um, is it okay if we record from here? Okay. Yes.
All right, just give me the signal and I'll start the music.
Give me this. The signal. Congrat.
Do we do a run of applause first?
Come on. Can we take a picture? Can we get a picture with the board?
Yeah.
Uh, board members, if we could get a picture? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm more like, I've got a new phone. They were. I've seen them a few times. They performed, they performed at our, uh, the Dia de the Dead thing. Yeah.
That was beautiful. Mil gracias. Um, okay, we're going to move on to the association reports. Uh, Elliot, you are up.
Very much. Got that up? Sounds good. Uh, all right, so I just got some notes. We're going to go over some stuff that's been happening at River City High School and all the other board, uh, schools. Uh, there's no, uh, Bridgeway, Riverbank, and Westmore Slyes, just so you guys know, by the way. All right, so in Elkhorn, they have their, uh, Spirit Week that just happened with their Red Ribbon Week, which is celebrating, uh, like, uh, no alcohol, no drugs, stuff like that. And their middle school flag football team made it all the way to the championship and played very well. I went and saw the game. It was very fun. Uh, in Southport, uh, they have their Kindness Club, which has been going well, and they made a huge kindness quilt with all the students participating. They had their, uh, Family Movie Night, which went very well, thank you for their, to their PTO. And then they are going to be going to Sly Park in December for their sixth graders, and that should be fun. Uh, in Stonegate, so they actually won the flag football championship, not going to lie. It kind of made me happy. That's where I'm from. My brother plays for the team, so that was really fun for them. Uh, it was a great experience. Uh, their first graders went to a, on a field trip to the, uh, fire station to learn more about, like, community jobs and what they could do. And then their, uh, web team put on a, uh, pep rally for the whole school to play games and prizes. So, yeah. In Westfield, they just had their Fall Festival for their whole school, and they liked, and it was great with a bunch of fun prizes, games, and, uh, performances. And they have great attendance that they are celebrating with all of their students. Uh, the Virtual Academies, huh? Oh, sorry. Uh, 28 of their students just, uh, finished in a drumming course that took them eight weeks, which is very impressive. I don't know if I would have the patience for that, but that sounds very cool. Uh, on November 1st, they, uh, their students on their campus had in-person learning day so they could all meet and greet each other. And then they're looking forward to their Virtual Spirit Week, in-person learning days, and a drive-through event for all of their students. In Evergreen, uh, they have welcomed more than three students, uh, to look forward to supporting them to be successful on returning to their home schools. And their students have been working on iReady diagnostics to measure growth and, uh, development in their school. Uh, Washington Adult School, they have another graduate who just got their GED, so congratulations. And we, they welcome Ms. Subia Smith, who is a sub right now in one of their ESL classes who is connecting very well to Director Tran and Director Gro... Uh, in YOLO, their superintendent, Hildreth, has been visiting on Tuesdays to meet with their students and give feedback to, uh, they'd like to thank the Assistant Superintendent and Director Burns for their cameos and support. Uh, their students are doing very well advocating for themselves, uh, with, and they keep showing that YOLO vibe. I think that's like their, um, like, I don't know what the word is. Yeah, that thing. Mm-hmm. Their motto, exactly. Uh, there's, they have vibe bucks, which their students are racking up, and their newly minted PBIS currency are entering into raffles for the new YOLO store. In Washington Middle, they're nearing the end of their first semester at Sac City, and most of their freshmen are doing very well in their college classes with 43 As and 3Bs all. I know, right? Right? I know. All English classes, nine through 12, are ramping up their college level, writing in ERWC. Seniors are getting very early, very good early admission letters for, accepting letters from Humboldt, San Slos County, and UC Merced. Uh, they celebrated Dia de los Muertos, uh, school-wide with an altar and traditional food, and during, uh, Creation and Innovation, their students participated in a Picasso Uh, so this is, uh, River City High School, so I've act, I actually have a little more to say to this. Ms. Flores gave me some notes that she'd like you all to know. Um, so they brought in a guy from Puebla, Mexico, and his molds have been actually passed down generations that have been used for years in the left collage, the bottom right. Those are sugar schools that all, that he demonstrated making for students, and he made about 300 of them to see a presentation and, like, to celebrate it. It was really cool. Um, they made over 300, like I said, and, yeah, it was really cool. Uh, some more that's not on this slide, and we don't have any slides that I'd just like to say, uh, there, our homecoming went very well. Our rally had full partition, participation. Our juniors won. Thank you. The dance was really great. We made about $16,000 in, uh, that, uh, money, and that's about 2,000 more than last year, so we did really well this year. And our homecoming game went very well, too, because we beat McClatchy, and our student section went very well. So it's been pretty good at all schools so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Appreciate it. As always, you're welcome to stay, but we understand it's a long weekend, so if you have other things, we understand. Um, moving on to CSE report, uh, Vice President Ruth Begano turned.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, President Wong, and Board of Trustees and staff. We would like to provide you an update on the continued impacts related to health aides that we have previously spoken about. As of tonight, several sites are still having shortages. Our secretaries are still being impacted when health aides need time off or are sick. We ask, when a bus driver is out, a campus aide cannot drive a bus. A food service employee cannot drive a bus. There are certain positions that cannot just be filled with whomever. Specialized training and certification are required. As of tonight, there are no health aide or substitute health aide positions listed on EdJoin. Getting a pool of qualified aide positions, uh, sorry, employees together would be one way, an important step, to ensure that this specialized and critical-to-student-health-and-safety position stay filled with qualified personnel. Many members have been adversely affected because of this. In the last week, two impacted members shared their concerns, and I will be reading their messages now so that their voice can be heard. We also have a member here that would like to speak tonight. "To whom it may concern," these are their words. "I am the school secretary at one of our schools. I am writing because I don't think it's fair that our health aide cannot take a day off for a doctor's appointments, or if she is sick, or even for her children's school events. When she is out just for a few hours and she has no sub, I have to do her job. It takes away from my secretarial job. She had a doctor's appointment last week. She left at 9:45 and came back at 12:00, and two of her students came in. One is diabetic, and her numbers were high. One second student had asthma. All this while covering my office and doing her job. It has happened other times, too, and I don't think it's fair that I have to stop doing her job to, doing my job to do hers." Okay. Once in a while, and I'm trained, and by trained, first aid, trained, to do it, but I do not feel comfortable doing it. My job is a secretary, not a health aide. Also, when this happens, I have to call someone else to cover my office so that I can cover the health aides. So no, her position is not covered. I really hope you hire health aide subs because she has a lot of kids coming to her. Thank you. The second message. "To whom it may concern, I'm a health aide. There are some concerns I have regarding time off and who I get to cover my shift when I'm out. One of my concerns is not having a sub to call when I need to take off time for an appointment. For example, last week, I had to take some time to go to the dentist. I put the time in on Aries and requested a sub, however, we have no subs as health aides. One of our secretaries had to step in and cover as a health aide and do her job at the same time. Another concern is if I get sick. Who would I get to cover my shift? There are no health aide subs available. On an average day, I see about 20 students in the health office. If I'm out, this puts a huge burden on our office staff and can cause more issues for students and staff with health concerns. Not only do I see students for common colds, stomachs, and/or anxiety, I have many students that have serious health concerns such as diabetes, asthma, food allergies, and then EpiPen is in parentheses. If I'm out and we have no one to step up to help these students, this can be a life-threatening issue that would never, I would never want to experience. Please understand, I don't like to take time off because I know that I do, do not have no one to cover me. My third concern is when I'm at lunch, who, who am I, who am I supposed to have cover me? I am constantly getting interrupted while at lunch, so I feel there is no reason to take a lunch if I keep coming in to take care of students. Please help me?" Question mark. "I'm really stressed and concerned for my kiddos. What should I do? I tried re-recruiting parents, subsecretaries, or subpar educators, but still no feedback or list of new sub-health aides come up in the front line. Recently, at our nurse-health aide meeting, we brought up this concern, and some of our health aides mentioned there's no posting for sub-health aides on EdJoin. However, there are jobs created that are brand-new positions to our district, but no job listing for sub-health aides. In closing," my words, "we are also heading into the winter months with illnesses and viruses on the rise. COVID is also a concern considering these additional impacts it places on the health offices. It's essential that we do something to mitigate these impacts now. Adding a roving health aide position is one solution." And then I would like to have our member, Nan, be able to speak.
Good evening. My name is Nan Jordanango, and I'm a health aide at Westfield. I am here this evening to share my concerns regarding the lack of substitutes throughout our district, primarily subs for the classified employees. The safety of our students is my main concern. Recently, I was absent for two days. I requested a sub, but it wasn't filled. The secretaries and admin covered my position. At the time, I had three students that required prescribed medications. I was able to relay this information to the teachers and staff so the students were given their medications on time. I take my lunch in the afternoon so it isn't such a burden for the office staff. I take it after the last recess. I do not have set break times, but I am able to have some small breaks when I need them. It seems to me that hiring a Washington Unified School District LVN or health aide that is roving or floating, or however you would like to word it, would be in the best interest of the district. This person could cover health aide absences. They are licensed and trained to give medications. They are AED and CPR trained. If they weren't needed as a sub for a health aide, they could assist the health clerk with immunizations or distributing supplies. They could also assist the school nurses. The district has a contract with Maxim Healthcare to hire LVNs to assist our children with diabetes. If they are absent, Maxim does not send replacements. Our school nurses are called to care for these students, or parents are called to come and administer insulin. Health aides cannot administer insulin. If we had a district LVN, they could cover this position as well. I respectfully ask that you consider hiring a district roving LVN or health aide. It is unfair to ask the secretaries or other classified staff to cover a position that they have not been trained for. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
And thank you for listening. We appreciate and value you all.
Thank you. Moving on to WSTA report, President Doug Knapp.
Sorry to interrupt President Knapp, but can you turn on the microphone so the recording can pick it up for upload later? No, the, on, the green button on the microphone.
On the mic.
On the mic.
On the bottom.
Down to the bottom.
The moment's gone. Yeah. No, I, um, I want to congratulate, um, everyone on making it through the political season. I know it's been a long week for a couple of board members in particular, and, um, it continues to be a long week because, uh, election machines don't always function properly. Um, but I just wanted to, to let you know that we all feel the relief, and I really look forward to continuing to nurture positive relationships with the board regardless of the final outcomes. Um, I think we've, we've done a really good job of working together so far, and, um, I'm looking to continue doing that. I also want to thank Dr. Hildreth. Um, once again, we had a fantastic argu, uh, argument. Yeah, I, I wasn't supposed to talk about that, Dr. Hildreth. Yeah, no, um, we, we had a fantastic conversation today. There was no arguing. Doesn't usually get that tense between us. Uh, we had a really great conversation today, as we always do when we talk. Um, I'm particularly grateful, um, when you give feedback directly responding, um, to comments that I've made or concerns that I've expressed. Um, that's, it's fantastic, and it helps to, um, grow the level of trust that has been already be growing, so thank you. I'd like to take an opportunity once again to talk about class sizes. I know I've talked about it several times this year, and I wanted to share that WUSD teachers remain extremely frustrated with this year's policy regarding class sizes between sites. Um, I'm hearing about it. I'm, I'm, um, teachers are not pleased with me for not advocating stronger, and teachers are not pleased with the change in general. Um, as I've stated in previous board meetings, our policy has shifting, shifted allowing sites to max out over the class size averages indicated in our CBA. In the past, WUSD would overflow overages between sites. This is no longer the case. This means that although there are only two miles, they're two miles apart, a Stonegate first grader, um, could have 26 students while Bridgeway could have 20. This seems inequitable for students and teachers. I'm also continuing to hear from reliable sources that students are being allowed to transfer from their home school in their home busing area, uh, in a class that is non-impacted to a school site where there are 25 kids, maxing out at 26. And again, this is only a mile and a half away from another school. Um, I, typically, I, I, I would kind of take it with a grain of salt because, and I was, I was talking to Dr. Hildreth earlier today, I understand that there are circumstances, right? A student may be transferred for, um, behavioral needs. A student may have actually not been in their home site and being transferred for their home site, um, transferred to their home site. But the sources I'm hearing from are not teachers. They're reliable sources and admin, um, that are telling me that there are students that are being transferred from their home site to an impacted, non-home site, and there are, there are not reasons for this. So when you have a classroom of 26, say, kindergartners, and there's another classroom of 18, any of you who've ever walked into a kindergarten class, um, know that that impact both on students and teachers. I mean, you can go down to the minutia of just, are there enough cubbies? To, oh my gosh, there's 26 kindergartners. I've seen Lord of the Flies, and this is reminiscent. Um, so I, I think this is an issue that we have to continue to take seriously. As I've stated before, I know this isn't going to be resolved in the middle of the year. We do not want to impact students. We don't want to move families who are adjusted and students that are adjusted, but what I am asking is that we continue to have this conversation. I'd like to see that if students are being moved to impacted schools out of their own home school, um, I'd like to see that addressed. So I'm asking for an informa, I'm asking, um, a formal information request to find out, um, if there are any students that are out of their home school, uh, site, and if they've been transferred. Um, I'd like to see what those are and what those reasons are, just so we can have some accountability. And I'm, what I'd really like to do, and I've, I've expressed this before, but I'd like to start having conversations regarding next year, um, on how we're going to make sure that we bring balance back to our school district, um, so that we are not having such discrepancies between sites. So, the next item actually, um, for over a year now, uh, WSTA has been approached by, uh, members of the SPED department, teachers, RSP teachers, uh, SDC teachers. We've even heard from some folks, some Paris. So, and I've had a conversation, I've had several conversations with CSEA leadership about this. And what everybody agrees is that there are issues that need to be addressed. And so, um, several of our RSP teachers, I want to acknowledge that I have Nicole Matthews in the room. She's an RSP teacher at Westmore Oaks. Fabulous. Um, there are several RSP teachers who are advocating for students and asked me to address this tonight. So I had them help me prepare this because I am not a SPED teacher, and I know there's a lot of details. So I'm going to issue some statements, but I wanted, before I issued some statements about this, I wanted to qualify them by acknowledging that SPED minutes and, um, SPED caseloads are an issue throughout the state, and I recognize this. This is not, um, Washington Unified is not dealing with this alone. This is something that's going on across the street, and we know this issue is going to become more and more challenging. Um, we've seen the projections, and we know this. However, I know that in WUSD, that our school board and our cabinet, we care and we want to be better. We want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to be the best. So acknowledging that there are issues in other districts across the state doesn't mean that we're not going to try and address the issues here. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the comments that have been prepared, and, um, and we'll move on from there. We can, uh, let's see, we can all agree that in our effort to strive for equity and quality instruction for all, we must prioritize our neurodiverse population. Their needs are often overlooked due to perceived staffing concerns. If our intention is to serve all students, we need to look at measures to address failings in our SPED department. If staffing truly is a problem, we are all too aware the governor just adopted the largest increase in education budget in recent history. We have the resources to acquire necessary staff. However, many of the issues regarding staffing could be addressed by making prudent choices regarding schedules and utilization. I'd like to start out by talking- I'd like to start out by talking about small groups. So SPED does not have language about what a small group is. However, both district intervention models, Sonde and Mathews-C programs recommend the most effective program does not exceed six students. There are mixed messages sent out at sites. Larger caseloads are often told, put as many kids in a group as you can to meet minutes. Suggestions such as run a workshop model isn't feasible when a SPED teacher is sharing a room with several other teachers. I also want to point out that minutes are being designed in IEP meetings according to student needs. So those students that have the highest needs, they're not being supported as much based on the staffing concerns. Next item is IEP meetings. Only one site, Bridgeway Island Elementary, or sorry, Bridgeway Island School, allows teachers to hold IEPs during the day once a week. All other sites ask teachers to meet after school unpaid. The inequity of caseloads could mean that one RSP teacher has minimal meetings after school, and another one may have up to 28 or more as their caseload fluctuates. IEP meetings can run anywhere from 45 minutes to two hours or more. The contract for all credentialed staff requires 12 hours of adjunct duty. However, special education teachers are required to work after hours for more than double the 12 hours due to IEP meetings in lieu of adjunct duties. And I'd just like to acknowledge on this issue that other school districts have addressed this, because if we are prioritizing, we understand that teachers and SPED staff have professional requirements, but if we are prioritizing our neurodiverse populations, we need to acknowledge that we need to meet these services. And a local district, Davis, has just decided that they're going to compensate teachers for their hours. They used to hold them all during the day, but as we know, the SPED numbers are going up, and so that capacity is being overtaken. Caseloads versus minutes. While most RSP teachers are at or below 28 students on their caseload, the minutes that each student receives can be overwhelming and unmanageable when combined with all other student minutes. There are sites still struggling to meet minutes. When an extra staff is available to make up those minutes, students could be pulled from class multiple times in one day in an effort to make up those minutes. This is a disservice to our most needy students as they lose instruction in the least restrictive environment, and also lack of continuity. As we know, many in our neurodiverse population need consistency in their schedule. That's why we create schedules for them, and so this is definitely something that breaks up their day. Also, the limiting staffing issue becomes a burden in the case where our neediest students are struggling or being disruptive in their home classroom. In these cases, we are needing to cancel other groups to address the needs of students that occur outside of the designated IEP minutes. With limited staffing, we are unable to be responsive to student needs without sacrificing the minutes, addressing the needs of other students. I think it's really important under this section of caseloads versus minutes to talk about the fact that there's this misunderstanding that caseload is the issue. And caseload is an issue. In a lot of places, people are over their caseload. That's not the case in all of our sites here in WUSD. But caseload doesn't really matter if you're not meeting the minutes that a student is entitled to under their IEP. And that's where we're having, most of our problems is meeting those minutes. A site with 67 IEPs has two full-time RSP, two full-time paras, and one part-time RSP teacher. Because the part-time teacher is not onsite Monday through Wednesday every other week, one para must stand in his place, meaning she cannot help any other group or student. She will often have to be with a group without a teacher supervising as other RSP teachers are out meeting their minutes, and the part-time teacher is at another site. When subs are needed, often para educators can be pulled, subs for RSP teachers have been pulled, and meeting minutes are put on the back burner with the statement, you can make them up later. And anybody who's been in SPED knows that these minutes don't get made up later. In regards to para educators, these wonderful people are being asked to work outside of ED code 45344. Labor's reading of this ED code is that when an RSP teacher is at split sites, they are forced regularly, or sorry, yeah, they're forced regularly to have their paras give instruction without the guidance of a licensed credential teacher. We can't take advantage of our paras dedication to WUSD students in order to satisfy our staffing needs. Not only is this unfair to our students, but our staff as well, and it's also out of compliance with ED code. I would ask that you speak to our RSP teachers who are split between sites to ask how their paras are given instruction on how they are supervised. In closing, the most delicate of our students are often getting the short end of the stick. They are supported by teachers who give their all, yet their teachers are not met with the same support from the district. I would be interested to see how much money is paid out to families based on legal liability. Have compliance issues cost the district more than the impact of hiring the appropriate number of qualified staff? Looking at the data, it appears not only more effective to hire more SPED professionals, I would venture to say it is also more cost-effective. Financials aside, we must serve more effectively and more resolutely these populations. Thank you for your time. I know it was long tonight.
Thanks, Doug. We are going to move on to public comments. I understand there's at least one, but before we invite them up, I'm going to go ahead and read the disclaimer. The members of the public may address the board on the topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item for an item. Individual speakers may be limited three minutes to comment on any topic unless amended. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Mario, our first public comment, and I understand that we might need translation. Do we have that available?
We don't have, I can translate if need be. Maria Garcia is so far the only submitted public comment request. If anybody else would like to make a public comment, the forums are to my right, but we do invite Maria to the podium at this time. Si quiere subir al podium, va a comenzar. Ya está, ya está.
Buenas tardes.
El tiempo lotado, son tres minutos y acá está disponible. Acá está la seña, pues.
Pero tengo seis minutos, ¿verdad?
Tres.
Y los tres minutos para traducir.
Tiene seis. Para en inglés, en traducir.
Sí. Ya, so tiene tres en español y tres míos para traducir, la traducción.
Sí.
Sí.
Verdad. Bueno, mi intención no era venir a hablar hoy, solamente venía a mirarlos. Pero si creen en Dios, las cosas a veces se dan por cosas de Dios. Cuando miré entrada a las muchachas que venían a bailar aquí, me recordó mucho que he estado hablando con la señora Cristina Rodríguez, Cristina Rodríguez, en la primaria de la Riverbank. Y estaba hablando acerca de, ya tengo más de un año hablando, casi dos años hablando con ellas, de que me encantaría que metieran algo de personas que bailen dentro de la escuela folclórico. Y en esta vez que vinieron estas muchachas, pienso que tal vez es algo que por alguna razón estaban aquí. No lo planeé ni nada, pero me da gusto que estuvieron aquí. Y como miraron todo eso, es una cosa tan bonita para nuestros niños que aprendan. Aparte de hacer ejercicio, porque es una parte de estar haciendo movimientos, y otra parte les da esa sensación de bienestar a los niños. Eso ayudaría bastante con el comportamiento de los niños dentro de las escuelas. También otra de las cosas, todo lo que estaban diciendo ellos es cierto, todo eso tienen razón. Muchas cosas están pasando dentro de las escuelas, pero sobre todo el distrito no está siendo lo que debe de hacer, que es mantener a las personas que están dentro de las escuelas ya, mantenerlas con un buen pago, buenas horas de trabajo dentro de la escuela. No podemos estar reclutando y reclutando personas dentro de la escuela y que se estén yendo cada tres meses. Tenemos que saber cómo mantener a esas personas que llegan a trabajar adentro de las escuelas y mantenerlas ahí. Porque muchas personas como yo tenemos con tantas ganas, con tantas intenciones de hacer algo bueno para las escuelas, pero cuando se da uno cuenta de que no hay ninguna forma porque no hay esa, no, primero que nada el pago, las horas, y después de eso lo que es el trabajo en equipo. La gente, nadie o la mayoría no quieren trabajar en equipo, y eso es difícil. La política está ganando demasiado en todo esto de las escuelas, y no es justo, no es justo para nuestros niños que se siga pasando todo esto por falta de que no están dando lo que deben de dar dentro de las escuelas. Esto es un negocio para mucha gente, y lo saben. Es un negocio grandísimo, pero necesitamos que invertir en el negocio, y el negocio tiene que salir adelante con buen pago para la gente, buenas horas de trabajo. Gracias.
Full disclaimer, I'm not a certified translator, but I did my best. So, y si nota que digo algo incorrecto, me puede corregir. She stated, "My intentions were to not speak tonight, but if you believe in God, God motivates us. When I saw the dancers earlier tonight, I recalled how I had been speaking for over a year with Principal Rodríguez to implement dances similar to what we saw tonight. I was happy to see them dance. It is a beautiful thing for our students to see. On one part, they do get the exercise they need, but this activity is also good for them extracurricularly. Additionally, the comments made by them, referring to WSTA and CSEA, were accurate. We have to work on retaining employees with better salaries and benefits. Most employees traditionally leave after about three months. People like me are motivated to do something good for the school, but we tend to lose motivation when we see the pay and benefits. There's also no sense of teamwork. Politics are impacting our students. This feels like a business, and if it feels like a business, then we must invest in our business with good pay."
That was pretty good. That was pretty good.
Oh, Clark Venega says, I mean, you're translating next time.
No, no, I'm saying, that was good. That was good.
No other public comment requests have been received.
Okay. We are going to move on to item O because we do not have a public hearing. So last chance to pull anything from the consent agenda. Seeing that there are none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Chrissy Barnes moves.
Second.
Clark Venega, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
You have your consent agenda item, and I understand that we moved it so we could acknowledge a new person.
Yes, so I would like to ask our new coordinator of expanded learning programs, Ryan Carroll, if you could stand, and we look forward to you working with our director, Rahale, and the work that we're going to be doing and providing that service for our families who need support with before-school or after-school care and just expand on what we have. So, welcome. We look forward to working with you and hearing from you. So, welcome.
Welcome to the WSD family. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to information and discussion items. N1, update on the People Attitudes of Self and School, also known as PASS, Social Emotional Learning, SEL. Screener, Dr. Jay Burns, Director of Special Programs and Student Services, and Stan Moisage, Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services.
Thank you, everyone. So tonight, we want to share some information with you regarding one of our new tools that we have begun using in Washington Unified School District. As you recall, last spring, we began working with this, with our staff, to, as we recognized that there was a need to have some screening available for social emotional learning. The district had, in earlier years, made some attempts to do this, but mostly through some generic self-made type of assessment. So we wanted to do something more robust. So last year, we began to use PASS. And of course, the idea was that we would use it at the beginning of the year so that we could see our students and see what kind of improvements or what's needed to be able to better support our students over the course of the year. Un momento, por favor. Oh, you switched it. Okay, good. All right. Thank you. So this, of course, aligns to our strategic plan. We know the benefits of a social emotional mindset and mental health to everything we do, not just student learning, but also to our staff performance. All that hinges on being in a good place with our social emotional state of mind. So it touches all areas of our strategic plan. Of course, this is also, the systems of support for our social emotional are very important for our LCAP in terms of our school climate and our culture, so that's a major piece of that as well. So this touches major parts of our organization. Next slide. So tonight, we're just going to inform you about this program. It's the People Attitudes of Self and School. Of course, we call it PASS, and it's an online survey that assesses students' social and emotional barriers to learning. Our plan at this point is to do this twice a year in the fall, which we started this September, and also in the spring. And the idea, of course, is to use this information to support, better support our students. And of course, the man who's been leading this work is Dr. Jay Burns, and he's been doing an outstanding job, working with teachers, and he's going to give you the details of how this works at our organization.
Got it? Doesn't work? Okay, that's good. I'll just talk to the man over here. Hey, thanks for having me tonight. Thank you, superintendent. Thank you, trustees. Appreciate it. I'm not going to dance for you, though. I'll save you that. I'll save. We'll talk. We will talk. I was ready for that. Okay, guys, like we said, we're giving it twice a year, and we just gave it, right? We just finished the window about three weeks ago. Next slide. So we just gave this, and this is what I want you to look at. This is what we're looking for. We really want to support our kids. If you think about this, prior to having this survey, right, this screener, how did we determine if a child was struggling with behavioral challenges, bullying, absenteeism, poor relationships, mental health issues, disengagement? How did we know? A lot of times, it was word of mouth. It was just observation. Now we gave them a screener, right, a survey, to allow us to help see if we're missing anything with our kids. So we went a little deeper, right? Okay, go to the next slide, please. So I want you to think about this, and we started looking at this. What are we looking for? We're trying to identify emotionally vulnerable students, right? Who's struggling? Who's struggling in our campuses? Do we know who our kids are? We always talk about our MTSS meetings, our multi-tiered systems of support meetings, and how we're talking about the students, how we're identifying student needs. This is what we're doing. We're trying to tackle challenging behavior by gaining a whole child view. And then we're trying to inform our teaching strategies and intervention programs, because the teachers want to know what's going on with this student. I know the student's struggling academically, and then we look at the screener, and we said, did you know this was going on? Did you know this child was struggling? Take a proactive, or a more proactive and targeted approach to social emotional learning. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like. This is the cycle, okay? If you look at it, this is the cycle. We gave them a survey, then we analyzed the reports. So right now, we have the reports. We gave it to the school administrators. The school administrators are sitting down with their social workers, their outreach team, and then they're starting to share with their teachers, too. When this survey comes out, when this report comes out, it actually has a list of the students in their class, and it has nine categories, and I'll show those in a minute, nine categories, and it shows how they're doing. Green, yellow, orange, red. It shows how they're doing, and it talks about percentiles and how they should be, where they should be. We're looking for that child to be all on the green. So you can look at this when it comes out, and it's a spreadsheet, and I give it to it. So, you can look at this when it comes out, and it's a spreadsheet, and I give it to a teacher. And you could look at it, and if you see some red in there, there's some concerns. So, then the teacher starts looking at it, and it just gets that conversation going. But the first expectation is that the admin team is meeting with the social workers and the outreach specialists. We gave this, basically, third through 12th grade. At the high school, River City uses what's called mending matters. We use this at Yolo, Washington Middle College, and all the other TK through eighth. So, approximately 3,000 kids took this survey, okay? And it's about 50 questions, about 50 questions. Next slide. Now, if you look at it, look at this. These are the categories, right, all the way over. How do they feel about school? Feelings about school. Perceived learning capability, self-regard, preparedness for learning, attitudes to teachers. These 50 questions help delineate these categories, okay? It helps break it down into these categories. General work ethic, confidence in learning, attitudes to attendance, response to curriculum demands. When I give this back, the report, to the teachers, it breaks it down by grade level. It can break it down by class. It breaks it down by individual student. We can look at a whole school. We can look at a whole district across the board. Okay, next slide. I'll give you an example right here. One of the categories was feelings about school, grades three through 12, right? We gave this. We had about 3,000 kids take this. And there were these questions, right? I said, "There's 50 questions," and these are examples of questions that actually determines that category, feelings about school. "This school is a friendly place. I'd rather be somewhere else than in school." "I think the rules in school are fair. I think this is a good school." That probably wasn't a good question to ask Little Jay Burns. "I think the rules in school are fair." "I wanted everything to go my way." "I'm lonely at school. I am bored at school. I'm happy when I am in school. I like being at school. I feel safe when I am in school. I feel I belong to this school." So, we start getting this information back, right? We get this data, for lack of better terms. And what good is data unless you look at it? You dive into the data, you discuss the data, and then we determine what do we do next? And that's interventions, right? One of the things we talk about is data analysis, right? Common assessments, right? We give an assessment. We then analyze the data. What do we do with the data? We plan interventions. Some tier-one interventions in the classroom. Create a welcoming, inclusive classroom environment, empower students, increase feelings of belonging. Create a consistent start to every period, celebrate the values, actions you want to see, positive reinforcement. What would be a tier-two intervention? Well, we can go into that classroom, the social worker, or Victor Community Support Services could present some kind of lesson on, say, empathy, or whatever we're working on. Students can work in group with social workers, right? Small groups, girls empowerment groups, whatever is an example. Or they can work with the social worker on school-based social work counseling, right? If it's more intensive than that, we start talking tier-three, then we can refer to Victor Community Support Services for more intensive counseling. Next slide. Okay, I want you to look at this. This is what it looks like when the report comes back. Green, yellow, orange, red. And that's pretty good, because I'm colorblind. I had to memorize this, right? So, if you look at it, it's broken down percent by percentiles. It's nationally normed. The percentiles are benchmarked against the national norms. And it's actually internationally normed, too. They shared that. So, when I go to the next slide, and then I'm going to click back, but hold on one second. We're going to look at this next slide, and this is for grades three through five, feelings about school. And I want you to think about this thought. That's average third grader at Washington Unified School, Unified School District, scores higher than 37.7% of other third graders. I know you have it in front of you, too. Can we go to the next slide? Oh, other way. There, keep going. There you go. Okay. Right up there, you see how I talked about green, yellow, orange, red? We can see what it looks like. We start looking at feelings about school. Our third graders are scoring above, right? Right? We were talking about feelings about school. I want you to look at that. Now, slide back to that last slide. I want them to look at that real quick. Look at that. High satisfaction with their school experience. Our third graders have a high satisfaction with their school experience. Higher than 37.7% of other third graders, okay? Now, go back to, go forward. There we go. Our 29.9%, which is kind of right on the bout, on that border, 28.4, that's where we start asking ourselves, what's going on with our fourth graders? What's going on with our fifth graders, our sixth graders? It's not horrendous, right? But it's in that yellow range that we were talking about, that moderate. Look at the green. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jackie. Is this a good time to ask it? Let's do it.
It just seems like, I get it's normed.
Yeah.
But overall, nationally, isn't it just 30% of our kids are... I mean, let's just be honest about this data. I'm like, it's green. But it's still kind of sad.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to that last slide, real quick.
I mean, it's of all, I get it, all schools, all kids in all schools, right? I get that, but overall, all third graders nationally and internationally, it's kind of still...
But what they're saying is, the high satisfaction is 37% above, right? Above other third graders when they normed it, right? If I look at the yellow, that's moderate satisfaction. And I look at those other groups that say it was 28% above the moderate.
The 31st, the 4th, I get it, like, it's still like...
No, I hear you. Hear you. All right, next slide. Okay, we've looked at this.
If I understand that correctly, it's 30% is like, anybody above 30% is good.
They're good, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. That's what that means.
Okay, next slide. And we start looking again. We had it broken down. Boys, girls, Asian, black or African-American, Hispanic, white. So, we start looking at this, and we start having discussions, these third through fifth graders. I'm like, okay, what's going on with the girls? What's going on with our Asian students or African-American students? And then, we can even dig in deeper in looking by school, grade level, whatever. Next slide, please. These were some strengths. I know this is going to sound funny. This is going to seem like an odd slide. These were some strengths. 93% of our third through fifth graders had high satisfaction with their school experience. There was 100, remember, there's nine categories, right? Nine categories. So, third through fifth grade. That means about 27, right, I mean, 25 out of 27 categories were green for that to be high satisfaction with their 93% or more. 100% high satisfaction for Latinx and English language learners. Okay, third through fifth grade. Sixth through eighth grades, 93%. Once again, high satisfaction. 100% high satisfaction for our boys and girls in sixth through eighth grades. Families in transition, right? That's what we call our homeless now, families in transition. Our white, African-American, and Asian, 100% were highly satisfied. Ninth through 12th grades, we're at nine, and remember, this is Yolo, Washington Middle College High School. 94% high satisfaction, 100% satisfaction for our boys and girls. Now, areas for growth, right? You saw it on the other slide, but this is how it starts showing up. You start looking for yellow, orange, red. We saw some yellow on some areas, our fourth through sixth grades, our girls, right? Our third through fifth grades, our Asian, our African-American, our students with IEPs and families in transition in third through, I mean, we saw some areas. Learner self-regard, right? Learner self-regard. Students with IEPs and English language learners were areas to look at. So, what is this telling us? This is telling us that we want to dive deeper into the data. So, I'm sitting down with Maricela Romero and Rosario, right, Rosie Arcona? And we're looking at this data, and we're saying, "Let's break it down deeper. What are we going to do with this data, and then how are we going to intervene?" So, when I was talking to Rosie, Rosie's saying, "Well, I need to look at this and see what kind of lessons I need to provide in maybe grade-level lessons, school-wide lessons, maybe a small group lesson." The social workers are saying, "Well, maybe there's something we're missing that we need to provide." Or maybe there's something, as we sit down, right? We have our MHSA grant, and we're working with Victor Community Services. Maybe there's some things that they can offer on campuses. This is where we're diving in and using this data. And then, once again, I want you to think about this. You go to your MTSS meeting. We sit in there, right, as a grade level. We have administrators in there. We have RSP teachers, our special ed teachers, our social workers, our school psych, our youth outreach specialists in there. And we start looking at individual students to see how they're doing. And sometimes, people are like, "I didn't even know that that child was struggling. I didn't know that." Next slide. Thank you. Questions?
Well, public comments? Anybody? What's the N size? How many kids took it?
Approximately 3,000. And that was third, third through 12th.
No, I appreciate you taking a look at this and unpacking the data. So, but I'll look to my colleagues. Any questions first? Thoughts, reactions? Tracy Barnas?
I'm just curious about, you said you can break it down to the individual student. But do they feel safe taking this? I mean, when you say break it down to the individual, I don't know if I wanted to answer that I didn't...
Oh, no.
Doesn't identify the student. Is it anonymous?
No, it's not anonymous. We actually, the student takes it, it's a, it's an active consent, right? I mean, passive consent. So, we send it home to the parent. We notify them that we're giving this survey, and please contact us if you don't want your child to take this survey. And we, you know, we kind of share a little bit about the survey, give them some examples. We don't share all 50 questions, right? We don't share all 50.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Is, is this survey done in multiple languages?
Good question. Good question. It's, right now, it's translated in Spanish, but it's not translated in all other languages. And that's, you know, that's a concern. That's, you know, that's definitely something when we meet with the past people, and we're working on that. We actually had it, Brian Briggs did an amazing job at breaking down the survey. I'm going to tell you, at the younger ages, it's not so quite easy to give, right? So, we have great slideshows that Brian created. So, the teacher's taking the time, projecting it up on the screen, right up on the TV, and then walking them through it and taking their time. So, in theory, right, everything's fast and easy, but it wasn't that fast and easy, because the teacher has to facilitate it and make sure, right? And back to your question, too, making sure that that effective filter in the classroom, that the students are comfortable and not stressed out and feeling good, and kind of giving them a, there's even a little blurb that we worked through, and we had to kind of clean that blurb up so that it's not so technical sounding to the kids? Like, be comfortable. We love you. We care. Do the best you can on this. And it explains to them what it is.
So, okay, and so, it's the same questions for a third grader that we would ask our senior?
Yes. Third through fif, third through 12th, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm just thinking.
No, no, no.
Tracy Pizzotti?
Yeah, so I noticed that there is a falloff in four, five, and six. Since my kid falls in that category, and she's pretty dissatisfied with school, I would say, could it be because there's usually a jump in responsibility? And, and I guess, level of rigor, starting after third grade, it starts to get incrementally more, you know, rigid and respond, and the kids have more responsibility, and it gets harder, just, you know? And it's not what they're used to coming from primary. So, I'm just curious, has that been kind of delved into in terms of a satisfactory level with the, with the school? And also, the second part of my question is, we have IEPs listed on there. What about kids with 504s and SSTs?
Yes, 504s.
Do those fall in the IEP category? No.
No.
Okay. So, what category would those fall into?
504s are tagged as 504s.
There's not tagged on here.
Right. I didn't have, I didn't have that piece of data up there. And when I looked at the 504s, you know, and I can share that next time, the 504 data for sure. I'll take that. I'll note that.
Right. Because, again, I can only think about my firsthand experience and why a kid with, you know, ADHD, who doesn't qualify for an IEP, would be dissatisfied with school or find school, you know, unpleasant? Because they just have a hard time focusing, and they feel like this is not for them. So, I'm just curious, how do we quantify that kind of information or other learning disabilities that don't quite qualify, but makes it harder on kids to feel comfortable in school?
One of the things I noticed when I started looking at the data, too, all 50 questions, not just categories, I can look at all 50 questions, individual questions, kind of like the example, the feelings about school. And I can see for a student, or I can break it down and see if it's green, yellow, red. And then, I can look at the categories, or not the categories, but the subgroups, right? Like you're saying, 504s, boys, girls, ethnicity, race, whatever, and start delving into it. And then, one of the things that I found us doing, too, is we found ourselves going back to the Healthy Kids Survey, too. And going, "Let's look at the Healthy Kids Survey and see if there's seeing a connection in there." One of the things that my colleague over here, the amazing Stan, is doing is with the NCUS, right? The Equity Walks and the Equity Talks. Part of that Equity Walk and that Equity Talk is looking at this data, right? The Healthy Kids data, the pass data, grades, everything, and seeing if any of these things are coming up, then we're not thinking about any ahas or thoughts, kind of like you're saying. Anything you want to share about that?
No, just, just to your question, Trustee Pizzotti, that, you know, it's intended to help us see, you asked about students, you know, and what grade level, if they have a certain feeling. It's intended to give us that, because maybe a teacher or principal thinks everything's pretty normal. And so, you know, when they look at this and they say, "Oh, wait a minute. Fourth grade seems a little bit, you know, there's definitely a difference here." We want them to be able to delve into that with the teacher, with the students, and look into that a little bit more. And so, this does give us the capability, a much better capability to do that than we had before. In regard to whether, what's causing maybe fourth or fifth graders to not like school as much as third graders or like, like it as much as ninth graders? I mean, it can be a lot of reasons. It could be those things that you mentioned. Class could be harder. There's more kids in class. I mean, those things could be a factor. But, but that's, but that's what this data helps, is we can actually delve into that, and we can, we can actually approach that with the class, or the teacher, or the principal can do that. That's what it gives us the ability. It was interesting to note, though, that looking, it's not just responsibility, and because you noticed on the data that we saw that ninth and 12th graders had a really high, some high numbers.
Did, yeah.
Some really high numbers. And so, it's more than just, it's more than just that.
Right. I guess what I was also looking at is that age groups. I've, I've noticed, just from experience, that social factors are now starting to play into it more so than they ever did in, you know, first, second, and third. You know, the, the bullying seems to intensify and start really becoming predominant in, in, you know, fifth and sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And I'm also seeing more peer pressure and anxiety about keeping up with peers and things like that, that also puts pressure on kids to maybe have, you know, you know, a little less comfort in their, in their school environment. So, you know, school's their world right now, because it's all they do pretty much five days a week. So, I'm not surprised that you see the change or the drop-off in those areas. I guess I'm just kind of concerned, like, how do you mitigate for the change in the dynamic that a kid goes through at those ages?
I'm thinking about what Stan just said, too. If we don't have the data, then it's just a gut feeling, right?
Right.
Now, we've got the data, the quantitative data. We've got the qualitative, but now we've got the quantitative. And now, we're going to dig in deeper to it, which then allows us, when I go back to the MHSA grant, and we're talking about that, and I talk about needs. So, when I'm at the regional meetings and everything else, and we're sitting down and saying, "What are your needs?" I go, "Well, let me show you what this past survey showed us. Looks like we have a need for X, Y, and Z in our schools and these grades." And I can hone it down to the grade, the school, whatever. So, before, it was more like going back to those meetings with gut feelings. And if you looked at the California Healthy Kids data, that was fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th, and that was every other year, right? We're giving this pass survey twice a year, and we're looking at giving that California Healthy Kids Survey once a year now.
But we will be able to compare this information with the end of the year?
Yes, correct. And that's the goal, right? We want to see if we've got some growth on some of these kids, too, come in February.
Clark Vanega, did you, you had some thinking to do?
So, just back to the multi-language, you said that that is urgent. I like to just hear a goal as to what urgent, you know, the word urgent is real, right? But what, do we have a deadline as to, we want to be able to offer this because our students? We have them now, right? So, do we, are we looking, or in those conversations, if we've already had them, maybe can we come back with a, you know, we're, we will have it in this, these languages by X date, whatever that date is, just to be realistic and ensuring that, that we're speaking to their language, right? To, so we can kind of make sure we're not just adding more barriers to a situation.
Our hope is that we would have those in place by the next time we give this assessment for students. However, it is, it is technical, and so, we do have to work through it with... However, it is, it is technical, and so we do have to work through it with, it's not just something we can just automatically do.
Right, right.
We have to work through it. But, you know, this is new and if, if we find out that one survey doesn't serve our needs, we might end up going to a different type of screener that can do that. So right now, we're trying to work through it with them. They've been responsive in our other questions that we've had so far. But just to your point, we want, we'd like to do it by the next time we administer this.
Okay. And then my, my next question would be, so, I mean, every student has different strengths. So do, do some of these questions talk about in what area or what time of the school, like the time of the day? Do they feel most comfortable or do they feel most successful or do they feel most, it's not just the time of the day, but it's also maybe the subject, the, it could be a teacher, it could be, I mean, you know, they, we might, we might be able to find out that they have a trusting adult, right? Ultimately, it comes down to relation, healthy relationships. So does it break it down to whether it's time of the day or whether it's certain activity, indoor, outdoor?
No, it doesn't break it down that specific. But I welcome anybody if you want to see it. Give me a call, stop by. I will show you the question.
Press President Kirby Gonzalez?
Thank you. I think that for me, the last, the data summary, the first set was, you know, those are the numbers that are really helpful to see, like the 93% feel this way or that versus comparing it to the national norms. So maybe in the future, or even just sharing with us, since it sounds like this program has a lot of options for data, if we could see, you know, third graders scored, green here, red here, you know, having a better idea of just our kids and our data, I think would be helpful for the future because the areas for growth, you know, we don't necessarily have an understanding of that because the data isn't right here. And I know we like to like dig in and pour through it. So that would be helpful for the future. And then I am glad that we now have a screener that we're using. I think that Healthy Kids had, you know, a place, but there's no way that we can say that that, you know, was filling a gap like this right now. So this is much better. I'm happy about that. I'm wondering if there's some kind of a family report that comes through that this vendor has, that has any kind of information for families to get, maybe not the deep dive of all the questions, but to have a pulse for their students?
No, nothing to date, but I'll take it to know because we meet with them quite frequently.
Yeah.
And kind of like your question, and these are the questions, we meet with them, you know, quite often.
Yeah, I would love that if you could ask them because I think families would probably like to have an idea because sometimes, you know, just like a, a teacher or an educator who's with kids might not see a little place where there's trouble. Parents have good pulses with their kids, but there's areas as well that, that they might need to be alerted to. So I think that that would be helpful. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Good job. I'm glad you have additional tools in your tool belt to actually design a program that meets the needs of our kids from a targeted universal perspective. And so, yeah, I mean, I might stop by and look at all 50 questions because I'm curious, you gave us a small subset, subset, so I'm just curious as to what the rest of the questions are. So it's not something you can share with the board, a link or anything like that?
No, no, not like that.
Okay. Yeah, I suppose it's for me, it's like, okay, 93%, like, so you, the data summary is like 93% of third to fifth graders, third through fifth graders have high satisfaction. Then I look at this and I'm like, my mind isn't actually like, it's not making sense to me that how can we have 93%? But then you're telling me that, you know, the data doesn't really just kind of...
And I'm more like you where I look at it in the colors and having it delineated right in front of me, broken down, I can see nine categories, I can see the grades.
Yeah, so you're like 93% high satisfaction, but you're telling me all my third graders only 37, not only, I suppose it's high, 37.7, like compared to the national norm, like, okay, like, as long as this is useful to your team?
Yes.
Right? However this is used, you're being trained to use it and be strategic about the investments, I am all for it. So I appreciate you actually taking the risk of using this screener and I'm sure it'll evolve over time. Really great work team on a, you know, the middle school grades of 100% satisfaction of those who took it, right? And English language learners, which is pretty impressive because I know that we made huge investments with our English language learner community and it's been a priority for this board for quite some time, which is really impressive, so that we should celebrate that. And I think I'm just really excited about what this will yield. So as you disaggregate it further, thank you. Oh, one other thing. Sorry. Next time, wondering if it might be important for us to actually see a school site?
Sure.
Disaggregate it by school site.
Okay. Not a problem.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the UTK updates. Stan, you're back up.
Thank you once again. I am going to be joined on this presentation of Transitional Kindergarten by our Director of Early Childhood Learning and Director of many other things, Rahale Attabaki. So she'll be joining me here tonight. We can go to the next slide. And these are the areas where we align to our strategic plan. So very big part of our whole child and healthy, safe, challenged schools and success in the early years are very, very critical with, with this program. So we line in several areas. And again, I think in our equity principles, a big part of this expansion has been to allow more families and more students access to early childhood learning than, than there were before. So it has very big impact on our equity principles. Going to the next slide. For us, again, with Transitional Kindergartner, Transitional Kindergarten, it's, it's really about, teaching and learning are big in this part. And so this is the pillar that we see as being a big, a very critical area. It does touch other pillars, but it's definitely teaching and learning that we feel is really the most forthright part of this, especially with the collaborating with our, our educational partners and our families for caregiving. You okay back there, Doug? All right. Good. Good. So a purpose for tonight is we want to give you a little background and overview of TK. We did a presentation for you last spring. We thought we'd probably have to go over some of that information again, so we'll bring, we're going to talk about that. We also want to talk about some recent activities that we've done and also give you kind of an idea of some of the sample models that, that can be used to implement TK. And then talk about next steps, which mean expansion and also details about next actions that, that are needed. Next slide. So as we were doing this presentation, we were often reminded that not everybody can catch up with the abbreviations. And so we want to just kind of go back a little bit because there has been some changes in some of these, some of this terminology over the past year and a half or so as the state has been working on this initiative. So we hear the term UPK, Universal Pre-Kindergarten. That's the expansion of the state's mixed delivery system to meet the early education needs of three and four-year-old children and their families. Transitional kindergarten is a part of that. It's not all of that, it's just a part of it. And of course, in Transitional Kindergarten, the universal part means that it's going to be available for free for all four-year-olds by 25, 26. So that's the expansion of being universal and being for all. In general case, TK is kind of this bridge between preschool and kindergarten to develop a strong foundation for school success and build students up to that, to the appropriate learning environment. Next slide. So this is a little bit of review for you. As you can see, when we started the 21, 22 school year, the eligibility was different. It was for people turning four between September 2nd and December 2nd. And that meant that we had a lot less kids because not as many kids were eligible. So basically, the phased-in plan is that by every year, eligibility will expand by about two to three months. So for example, this year, we expanded the eligibility to go from, not just from September 2nd and December 2nd, it goes from September 2nd to February 2nd. And what that did was that increased the number of kids that we have in our TK program. Next year, it's going to go to April 2nd, from September 2nd to April 2nd, which means that there's going to be another group of kids and we will have even more TK kids next year. Next slide. I think it's really important to talk about TK because it's changed slightly in terms of some of the rules and procedures compared to what we previously did. And that has a big impact on staffing, facilities. So it's really important to understand these changes because we've had TK in the district for a long time, but these rules were not in place when we did that. So again, this expands Transitional Kindergarten for all four-year-olds eventually, phased in over four years to 25, 26. The max classroom size is no more than 24 students per classroom. No more than 24 students per classroom. Very critical, we understand this because there is strict enforcement penalties if we exceed that in TK. So another part of it, of course, is the smaller classes in terms of the ratios of adults to, adults to students. So for example, this school year, our adult-to-student ratio was 1 to 12. However, next school year, that adult-to-student ratio is going to be 1 to 10. So if we have a room of 24 students, this year, you could have two adults in the room and you could be okay, 1 to 12. However, going forward, it's 1 to 10, which means that if you have a classroom of 24 kids in it, you've got to have three adults in the room. They don't have to be all certified, certificated, but you need to have three adults in the room if you have 24 students in TK. That, and that's very concept, that's a very important concept. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we keep going through this. So again, as, as we mentioned, we expect more and more kids to come as we change the enrollment dates going forward. So when we, in 21, 22, we had 78 kids in TK. So this year, because we ended up expanding the enrollment by two months, the eligibility by two months, we ended up with 117 students. What you have on the chart are the actual projections and working with a demographer, because we were trying to get ahead of this, to do some planning, we, we, we've got some numbers that, they were given to us. As you can see, 117 is not too far off. They projected 127 this year. We ended up with 117. At times, it's been 118, 119, so there's been some fluctuation. But they, they came off close by, they were basically missed it by single digits, so that's still pretty close. And as you can see, in 25, 26, it's looking like possibly up to 289 students that could be in our TK. So that's quite a big increase from 78 just last school year. Next slide. This slide tells you a little bit about where students are currently enrolled in our district and how many per classroom. So you can see, we have TK at Southport, Stonegate, and Westfield. Those are the three sites that we have this. It's an AM, PM schedule. And you can see in each class, how many kids are enrolled in AM and how many kids are enrolled in the PM for, for each of these schools, for a total of 117 across the district. We thought we'd like to share with you, since we have expanded the enrollment, that it'd be, that you'd like to see the demographics of who actually has been attending TK. So 21, 22 on the left are the percentages of different groups. And what the biggest difference really, there's not a whole lot of difference in most of these categories. However, there were three that I would point out to you as being very, that I thought were significant changes. White percentage of students enrolled in TK from 21, 22 to this year dropped by 7% from 31 to 24. In addition, our Hispanic students actually increased from 33 to 40% this school year. And in addition, our English learners increased from 20% of the population to 26% of our TK population. So there were some changes that we weren't necessarily expecting, but we just want to point those out to you.
Can I quickly ask a question on that? When you're only talking about 117 kids, you know, 7% drop is approximately, what, eight or nine kids?
Approximately.
Okay.
Okay, so we can go to the next slide. Okay, and so I, Rahale is going to take over for a little bit and I'll see you in a bit.
Good evening, President Wong, Superintendent Hildreth, and board members. It's very nice to be here and be part of this exciting time with TK. Go to the next slide. So when I was doing this slide, I thought, I never thought my background with the after-school program would come in handy with, with TK and ECE, but it did. So one of the big changes with TK this year has been the offering of after-school, before and after-school program. And we have been creative. So with Westfield, we have enrolled students and families that needed the after-school program in our preschool, in our state preschool, which has been amazing because the students are now in a safe and child-friendly environment, appropriate for, for that age level. So they attend TK in the morning and then they attend our state preschool in the afternoon. Super proud of that, that program at Westfield. Southport and Stonegate, we have the YMCA at Southport and we have TK students that attend there. They have been having students, TK students for years, so this was not new to them. So we were able to utilize them in supporting the students at Southport. And then the same at Stonegate, Champions has been taking TK students for a long time. We also have...
Rahale, are these subsidized or just...
A few of them are, yes, but not all of them. The ones that qualify, they are subsidized. The Stonegate one, actually, we have one TK student that's in ACES. So we have been using ACES, Champions, YMCA, and our state preschool to provide that nine hours that the state wants us to. And it's, it's just been really, really helpful this year, not, not just even with TK, since I can talk about ACES real quick. We have been doing really well with our after-school program too at other sites, not just at our ACES sites, but at non-ACES sites, trying to help families that need that help using our ELAP funds. So that has been really a big change. Go to the next slide, please. So as we expand and change TK, one of the big things that was on my mind was how do we get the new curriculum? Because the standards are changing, the students are getting younger, they're no longer those five-year-olds or four-year-olds, we're not, it's not that kinder readiness necessarily. These are preschools, preschoolers. So some of the things that we've started to do, one of them was SEAL training. I don't know if you're familiar with SEAL, but they are amazing. They do bilinguals and strategies that teachers can use with our bilingual, not just bilingual students, but any student. So we have started that using, through YCOE and the other neighboring districts, we have joined together and we are, our TK staff are attending the SEAL training. I do have another, through Justine at the city, she has connected me with an amazing team of coaches and they are providing standards training for our TK staff because the standards have literally changed and they need to become more familiar with. Because when TK rolled out years ago, it was kind of a watered-down kindergarten standard. And now they have actual age-appropriate standards. So that, I'm excited about that too. And then the last one is to find a curriculum that matches the age, this, the age of this, these students. It's not, I don't, I'm, we're not looking for a phonics-heavy curriculum. We're looking for something that gives us that social, emotional readiness for students. And that has been a little bit of a challenge, trying to find the right curriculum because technically they have, the state and all these curriculum companies have not come up with a TK-specific curriculum yet. They're working on it. So we, we are piloting this year, two curriculums that are coming highly recommended. And hopefully, we can make a decision at the end of the year and to see which one would be more appropriate. And next slide, please. And lastly, as we look forward, like Stan was saying about the expansion of TK and more and more students, we wanted to get the feedback from the community of what are they, what are their needs? Are they looking, with some of the questions were, do you need half-day? Do you need full day? Are you in need of before and after-school programs? And as of yesterday, I had 52 respondents and 34 of them said that they would like a full-day program, which is kind of consistent with, with other surveys we've had with this age group. And most of them did not need after-school, like after 3 o'clock. They were just like, we need that 8 to 3-ish, 8 to 2:30. So that's, that's about it.
Thank you. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. We can go to the next slide. So we'll talk a little bit about program models now. Okay, so this is really important to kind of go back, remember back when I was mentioning that it can only be 24 in a classroom, and we talked about those ratios. That really comes into play right now as we look into these. So I'll try to kind of talk us through it a bit. So if you look at our current year at the top, looking at the AM model, AM/PM model, you notice that we have, we projected 129, even though we didn't get that many, that's what was projected. We, for that, we understood that we were going to need three classrooms. That's, and then the next category is classes. Now, you notice three and six, it might get confusing, why is 1, 3, 1, 6? Remember, in an AM/PM, you can actually have two classes in one classroom. So it's three classrooms, but that's actually six classes, because each class has an AM and a PM version of it. So it's really important to kind of point that out. And that's six teachers. So in AM/PM, you have two teachers that are in the room, but one is the primary, depending on whether they're assigned the AM or the PM. So six teachers, and of course, as you move into the ratio, trying to make that 1 to 10 ratio, we already started working toward that 1 to 10 ratio. So we have a para in each of those classrooms in addition. So naturally, as you progress and you start adding more students into this, you're going to need more classrooms, and you're going to need more teachers, and consequently, more paras as well. So the staffing will increase as we go through there. So as we get to 25, 26, and we get to 28, 20, we look at 289 students possibly serving, then we see that we would probably need seven classrooms, and that would be 13 classes. The reason that's not 14 or doubled up is because, based on the number, we don't know that that would, all seven of those would have to be an AM/PM. One could be either an AM or a PM singleton that way. So that's why that's not an even number doubled up. So now, we just kind of go forward a little bit. We look down, we look at the full-day model. Different story, right? Because that means, if we're not doubled up in the room, that means each teacher will have to have their own room of 24 students. So that puts a bit more strain on facilities and, of course, staffing. So for 172 students next year, we would probably need eight classrooms. And of course, that would mean each of those classrooms would need a teacher, at least. And then there would have to be at least two paras in each of those rooms to meet that 1 to 10 ratio. So that drastically pretty much increases the number of paras that you would need in this model. And so, of course, the reason this is much drastic, this is drastically more different than before, is because in the AM/PM model, you can double up the teachers being in the room at the same time, and you can't do that when they're separated. So this kind of gives you an idea that we would need more teacher, more, we knew, we always know we're going to need more teachers as the numbers increase, and we're going to need more of everything as the numbers increase. But one model definitely needs a lot more paras and a lot more classrooms. Okay, we go to the next slide. So again, just talking about the classrooms, more specific just to the classrooms. In an AM/PM model, we, we, based on those numbers, by adding 24 into each kid, we would need, you know, a smaller number of classrooms per year as compared to a full-day model. And you can kind of see how that's, how that's kind of divided up. So if you had seven or eight classes, like in 23, 24, that means that's eight rooms. For how many classes you have, that's how many rooms you'll need. Okay. Now, one of the things to consider, too, is that there are some funds available that can help us with facilities if we need to build classrooms out. So this, in some of our research and working with school services, this is some of the things that we've found, just as for information. So as we add new construction for any rooms per this funding, they would be giving us a max of about 365, 575 per classroom. So that's, that's, and the match is, of course, that it would have to be about 50% of, 40% of the total would have to come from the district. That's not hard to meet that match, considering that the actual estimated cost of building a classroom is about $1,350,000. That's what our facilities is kind of estimating is what it would cost to build a classroom. So if the state gave us 365, 575 for a classroom, of course, we would automatically meet that match, because it's worth a lot, it's cost a lot more just to build one of those classrooms. In addition, I think the miscellaneous is one that was disappointing when we first came across it, was that for these applications, it's capped at four classes. And as you probably saw from the previous slide, we actually need, would need more than four classes to do this. So that really does hinder us a bit on the funding. We can go to the next slide. So here's just a little summary, just so, I know you looked at those tables, but just so we can kind of summarize the different models of where it's working. From AM/PM to full-day, you really, it's really no change in how many teachers you need, going from where we are now to 24, 25. So, you know, you're going to need additional seven teachers regardless of what model that we work at. The big difference comes with para educators. That's a huge difference, as you can see. And of course, classrooms as well. So there's definitely more classrooms that are needed for one, but I think probably the one that's more eye-popping is the number of para educators that would be needed to support the program. So as we plan for the future, our recommendation, our team's recommendation is that we continue with the AM/PM model for the next school year, but to continue to evaluate the financial staffing facility and programmatic impacts in order to convert to a full-day model, possibly in the future. Next slide. So for us, again, you know, we're considering what our staffing has looked like, making sure our staffing is trained, and we have the appropriate numbers as, that are needed, making sure that we have the adequate space and facilities, making sure, looking at what's the best model, best educational model to provide the quality that our students and families deserve, and then also wanting to create a great experience for the kids that are in the program, with well-trained teachers, that's age-appropriate, with a curriculum that's age-appropriate, and, you know, bringing that joy to the students at an early part of their life. So go ahead in the next slide. So our next step is, you know, coming back to you next month. And at that point, we could at least formalize the action for the 23, 24 school year. As you know, facility, staffing, all that takes a lot of planning. So we're wanting to bring that to you now in December, so that we can, we can set all those wheels in motion for the spring. And I think it's always important to point out the team, that we have a lot of people working on this, not just Rahaleh and myself, but people in business services, people in human resources, our superintendent office with communications, and we also have a very important partner at Yolo County Office of Education, and the city of West Sacramento, and Justine Jimenez. So those are, those are all very important partners for us and great resources. Thank you.
Before I move on to board discussion, are there any public comments?
No public comments received.
Okay, seeing none. Board comments, feedback?
There's a no over here, they don't want to comment. So I'm looking at your trustee, Barnes. Nope. Amazing, isn't it?
Well, I can--
They will, they'll wait.
Yeah, I know. Don't worry. They're, they're-- Thank you. I'm excited for this, because I know it's needed. I wish we'd had it, you know, when the girls were little, too, but I'm glad for what we had, but this would have been great. I'm just, I mean, I'm just thinking about, asking us to take action for the 23, 24 school year. It sounds like, logistically and financially, the best thing is to continue the way that you've suggested. But I am curious, I'm just curious of cost with all of the after-school programs that we provide and what we, and how the district contributes to that, and then what families are contributing, and whether or not that puts financial strain on anyone, and then also us or families, you know. And also, what was my other thought? That would just be good information. I'm really just curious.
What I can, what I can tell you is that major expansion in that area is well-planned. And so you guys took action tonight and helped us out a little bit by that, with that. We do have a coordinator that's going to be very designated. We recognize that we want to be more intentional that area as well, and we need to, and that's our expectation. So we're looking forward to expanding the programs.
Okay. And when you talked about the cap of four, I wonder if we predict that would ever change or increase as TK, because I think this could be a great thing to go full-day, but understanding also that I think that would be big, that would be expensive.
We were very disappointed when we were given the facilities grant information. Not only us, we were on the call with a whole team of people from Yolo County Office of Education. So I think, for whatever reason, many of us expected more. But, you know, at the same time, you know, you have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And as far as your question about what things could change, I mean, that's always a possibility. There are, there are a lot of people making noise about this. There are people thinking that there should be an additional support to this. So that noise is being made.
Good.
And so we'll see, we'll see what happens. I mean, I never say, you never want to say never, and we're going to keep our eyes open.
Yeah.
And we're going to stay, you know, we're going to keep, we're going to keep ongoingly meeting and talking to our educational partners to get the best information and research that we can.
Yeah, I think coming out of COVID, this can be really good for, this will be really great for our kids. And so I'm excited about the potential opportunity. And as we see the changes in behaviors and other needs, I think, starting younger and really letting our kids be loved and taught well at that young age is going to be important. So I appreciate this work. Thank you.
Vice President Kirby Gonzalez, or is it also--
Thank you. Will you remind us, is the phase-in approach one, I know, the capacity piece, is it also because we're not funded yet for everyone beyond the birthdays of why there's the multi-year phase-in?
I think they didn't want to overwhelm us. I do think that's part of it. I can't be totally certain, but I think they didn't realize that this was going to be a lift, and they didn't want to overwhelm us all at once.
And then, are we also not funded for those age groups yet? Is that true, too?
I don't, you want to take that one over there?
Can you hear me? Correct. We are not, we are funded for the students who join us, who meet the age requirements for that this year's phase. So if we decided to welcome students who don't meet that age group, that age limitation, then we will not receive full funding for those students.
Okay, thank you. I understand that, logistically, that would be a hard lift, but it's also just such an inequity that we're dealing with, that it's just a huge inequity for our kids, and it continues to be. But luckily, it won't be forever. So then, my question would be also, I love the model that you spoke to at Westfield, where the students then go to state preschool, because I'm just a big proponent of preschool. We know that we have high-quality preschool programs, and that's one where the space is right for the kids, that the people are trained for the kids. And so moving forward, since it looks like the AM/PM model is the recommendation, and where we'll probably be, how do we ensure that our kids, when they leave us and go to that third-party vendor, that that's really a high-quality space? How do we make sure of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So that's why with Champions and YMCA at the other sites, because Southport doesn't have a state preschool. But the staff there, Mr. Mike, and that whole team, they've been taking TK students for years. So they're very well-equipped and trained for that. The same with the staff at Stonegate. Now, I would love to use our state preschool at Stonegate, but that site is very much impacted. We have, we're always full and have a waitlist for our state preschool. But I do see potential for expansion with state preschool as we move forward with the TK kind of doing mixed models. So we'll see.
Okay, that's good. I love that preschool, too. I've been in there, and it's a fun, good environment for kids. And I've also seen our, I mean, I want to be careful how we speak to our third-party vendors we bring on, because we're very grateful for the YMCA and Champions and others to be there. But from, just from observations with my own children, it's, if I had the choice, I would put my children in a preschool other than that. And so I want to make sure that we're making decisions here that are best for everybody after. So if there is ways that we can continue that conversation next year, just to really ensure that they have some more training with younger kids, I think that that would, that's really important.
In addition, looking toward the future, you know, one of the, one of the big tasks for our new coordinator is to look on how to expand the programs. And that could be, that could mean additional partners than the ones that we already have.
Oh, good. That's what my initial thought was when we first talked about mixed delivery, was the idea of utilizing, we're just seeing the existing preschools--
And I don't want to, I don't want to like, you know, I mean, we're happy, we like, we love the partners that we have now, and we're not looking to discontinue any of that. However, from a capacity, from what we're hearing from the community, there needs to be an expansion. We have to look very carefully at that, based on, just on what your question was about the quality of it, whether there's a lot of considerations. But that is, that is a major task for our team as we go into the future.
Perfect. But that door is not closed. So those conversations--
Those conversations are ongoing.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then my last question is just, these conversations you recommended, commendation to us that's coming next, I think is also a conversation with our current kinder models, or not full-day. And so what that will look like, you know, is there a recommendation that's going to go for kinder as well, and our kinder, our families who are going to have this long day with subsidized care, what will that look like then, the following year, if they're moving into a kinder that has less hours? And so I'm wondering about that conversation and what that might look like in terms of that balance.
Well, these expanded services will be for kinder families as well. So we're, we're looking to do something comprehensive that way.
And they would be subsidized?
Of--
For students that qualify.
Where it's qualified.
We are using, right now, we're, that, as we--
Riverbank does have the kinder, the AM kinders get picked up at 11:20 and join ACES. So we are providing, at least for that site, we're providing services for them.
And what if you qualify as an individual, but you're not at a site? I hear you that you're doing transportation--
Yes, we also have that, too, at the sites that don't have ACES. We have been working with individual families, and if they qualify, we have, I have a list, they're being subsidized.
Rahaleh, you're fantastic. Thank you for all you do.
I don't even know what to say. Thank you. Thank you for the hard work, because I personally know how hard it is. I would actually push you to say that this is actually all four pillars and not just teaching and learning. It is about community engagement, as we just talked about. It's about teacher development, who you are actually, these are, we have not added a whole grade level to education in decades. So this is a major undertaking, right? And I appreciate you kind of sticking with it. My question, and it doesn't have to be answered today, is, I know you're doing this, is that the mixed delivery modeling around, what does Head Start look like? Like, how are you working with Head Start that on campuses that don't have AM/PM, then we're talking about UPK, UDK, CSPP? Yes, we should expand, because that is the right model. That is the one that we are trying to promote at this stage. And the ELOP dollars and the ACES is actually designed to actually fill in the AM/PM model, but really, I think the concern still will always be the nine-hour day, right? Like, I hear, I hear the statutory requirement is to offer, but also, who is accessing, why, ask the question, like, I know Southport and Stonegate, it is not subsidized. So those who can pay are taking advantage of it. The question then becomes from an equity lens, and that's what Assemblymember Cardy has said, that this needs to be equity-focused, advanced access for all. So if you can't pay for Africa, are you actually really even going to TK? Is there another model, right? Like, so it's just, it's a complicated conversation, and you're doing everything, and I'm excited that Ryan, Ryan, right, Ryan is coming on board, because I think that needs to kind of be, like, to your point, like, really focused, not for all of our kids, yes, K-12, but really, the additional dollars that we advocated for was to actually think about how to get this nine-hour days out there for those who are really, from a targeted universalism perspective, right? Even though they're, again, all, yes, all-access, but then who really is missing out? Who's not saying yes? And what's really happening to our-- And what's really happening to our Head Start and our Head, and I'm sure Vice Gail and you all are talking about. Right? Because statewide, we're seeing Head Start classrooms go dark, right? So because they can't find the teachers, because the teachers then, so that's why you have to have a community engagement. Because all those teachers are getting specialized, you know, credentials to get paid more by our district. But at the same time, then you lose access on Head Start side. So how are we actually planning for that, thinking about that, thinking about pipeline and workforce? And, you know, we're going to pilot something around badging or conditionally, I would love for us to kind of think about what that might look like to, again, similar to the last board meeting, right? That where we had aspiring leaders and the teachers. But I also think that there's also a pathway for like our Head Start preschool, after-school teachers. When we talk about quality, I get where you're coming from, but we have to build that pipeline and that workforce intention. Right? So I, that, but I will hold all my comments, but I will end with you are doing a really great job, right? That with a really tremendous task of adding a whole new grade level that we haven't done in decades. So I want to appreciate you for that. And we are building the facilities. We had the conversation last, last week about Westfield and the modernization. And I said, this is why we're like, the funding is actually building these TK classrooms, right? To code, which is exciting. And so I could see the potential already for the match, because we already have the match. We already, we're past the bond, we're working on the bond, and we've always prioritized UPK since we've been here. So really, I feel like all the pieces are falling, you know, together. And it's really friggin' hard, right? I would also add that we probably actually need to begin to engage our labor partners in the conversation about if I'm talking about work. Right? And all those. So that's, okay. All right. Moving on to voting items, and we're early at 8:10. So action item one, adoption of resolution number 222354 of the Board of Education ratifying the district's membership with Omnia Partners Public Sector. Is there an Omni Partners Private Sector? Yes.
Am I on mic?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. This evening, I would like to present to you for adoption, this resolution to partner with Omnia Partners Public Sector. Omnia is a cooperative purchasing group that is nationwide. It does have a variety of sectors, public and private. The benefit of, of joining a cooperative purchasing group is it helps us to decrease our costs. It helps us to also be able to purchase items more quickly so that the contracts are already bitted out following proper contract law, so that we can do some great things for kids. So we asked your approval of this resolution to authorize us being a part, or excuse me, a member with Omnia Partner.
Any public comments?
No public comments received.
Or comments, questions? Bobby?
So this is a group of contracted vendors that provide services that have already been through a bid process, but not by us.
Correct.
Okay. So I guess it's similar to how PERS bids out for, you know, pharmaceutical, you know, levels in terms of the vendors that they receive. Is that similar or is it for procuring things?
It's for procurement. I think of it in the realm of, if you're familiar with piggybacking on contracts. And so, which means that there is an already.
You're ganging a contract with another district to make.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, got it.
And the, and the, the terms are already set, the price is already set so that we can avoid having to go through that individual competitive process. It's already been done with specific vendors.
Any other questions, feedback? Christie?
Sorry, is there a point where trust you? So I assume no, but where we would become concerned about increased pricing once locked in?
Yes. So what's great about, I think what's great about this resolution is it authorize us, authorizes us to be a member. We have another item that's coming forward to you today to request approval of a contract. So each time we see a vendor within the cooperative purchasing group within Omnia that we are interested in contracting with, then we contact that vendor. We let them know what we want. They let us know how much it will cost. And we determine if we think it's the best thing to bring to you for approval. So we always have our eyes on it. It just opens the door for us to be able to take advantage of that contract should we want. And if we're unhappy with the terms of the contract, with the price of the contract, it doesn't prevent us from going directly to that vendor ourselves.
You're welcome. Any other clarifying questions, feedback? Seeing there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Christie Pazadi moves.
I'll second.
Christie Barnas seconds. All in favor? I'm not going to read the resolution. Just so you know. Resolution number 2223 dash, they're publicly posted for everybody. Dash 55, recognizing me, he or as a vendor with Omnia. Dan?
It's like, ask Doug. Doug knows now where it's at.
It was, it was, it was like, it was kind of sunk in there a little bit. I didn't see that. No. Okay, good. So I felt it's good that Monique actually got to talk a little earlier because I felt like she got to explain the whole thing to you so that I can just kind of tell you what we're doing here. So as.
Feedback on her presentation?
So, as you heard, it was an intergovernmental cooperative, a purchasing organization. And that it helps us in accordance with like formal competitive bids and pricing and things like that. So Washington Unified School District is a registered member of Omnia. We're interested in using the Meteor Educational Contract.
Now we are.
Now we are.
Now we are. So we're interested in using the Meteor Educational Contract, which is awarded to Omnia for the purchase of products as a way to reduce cost. And so we would like to continue with that by utilizing this competitively to bid contracts available through Omnia.
Any public comment?
No public comments received.
Any questions?
Yeah, just to give scan a hard time, can you list the top 10 things that you want to procure with this contract?
Can I list the top 10 things? I spend a little bunny. I don't spend that much.
Well, there were a question is actually what's our saving?
Ooh, there you go.
I bet you Monique knows. No? You could also just tell me you're going to give. No? We don't know what our savings at? I just love the something, the space on Stan.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to come do this item, so. So the fact that you gave me a hard time, I didn't want to.
I will move this.
I second.
But it will save us money. I'm sure.
Specifically how much we'll fund, we'll figure out later. Christie Pazadi moves. Clerk Vanegas seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Sam, for putting up with us. Approval of measures the Westfield Village Elementary Modernization Budget Alignment Solutions. Moni, you are back up.
Thank you again. In general, we can save anywhere from 10% to 15%. But if you would like the specific details, we can add.
I like that. That is a good range. Thank you. Thank you for the transparency and I think the public likes to know. Because I'll, I'll, I'll use my target card just to save 5%.
Wonderful. So we are excited to be back here this evening to follow up on the information item we shared and discussed with you at our last meeting. So we are revisiting the Westfield Village Budget Alignment Conversation. We will be asking for your approval of the budget alignment solutions that we discussed. Since our meeting, we did have follow-up conversations and have more information to answer the questions that you had at our last meeting. But at this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to our Director of Facilities, Giselle.
Good evening. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to request the board take action to approve the Westfield Village Budget Alignment Solutions discussed on October 27th. Our alignment to the strategic plan was goals for student success, whole child healthy, safe, challenged and supported. Our equity principles are ensuring that all students are provided access and opportunity to resources. And our four pillars or pillar D, safe, climate and equitable access for all. Our strategic priorities and key actions. D1, ensuring that every school is safe and welcoming for students, staff and families. So the budget alignment process that we've gone through. First, we did a presentation to the Facility Subcommittee on October 17th. Next, we did a presentation to the Board on October 27th. Tonight, we're coming back with our request to approve the alignment solutions. And I'm going to give you an overview or a summary of our presentation information from the 27th. Programmatic changes have occurred at Westfield Village since the development of the facility's master plan. And it's necessary to include additional elements in the design. We started with the design estimate and we added those programmatic additions. And we wound up with a total estimated cost of $38 million, $24,000. As a reminder, we started with a construction budget of $30 million, $466,000. We came up with estimated costs of $38 million, $24,000. That left us with a funding gap of $7 million, $558,000. Collaboration with district partners along with recommendations from the project architect and contractors identified student-centered solutions. We identified $4 million, $468,000 in de-scoping, $3 million, $110,000 in additional funding. And the total amount of changes due to de-scoping and additional funds was $7 million, $558,000. As a result of the collaboration in student-centered solutions, the new revised bud, construction budget is $33 million, $556,000. And the board asked us to come back with details on sustainability measures for the Westfield project. Those measures fall into three categories, energy savings, water conservation and materials reuse. Some key features were motion and daylight sensor lighting, north-facing clerestory windows, insulated glazing, low-flow plumbing fixtures, drought-tolerant landscape, efficient mechanical systems and reuse of existing materials such as polished concrete. Board asked for further collaboration with our district partners and we reached out to primary instructors, the Rotary Club and the Middle School Task Force. Our primary instructors were really enthusiastic about the design and they had some great ideas for us to consider as we move forward with the process. We'll be meeting with the Rotary Club in the next week. And when speaking with the Middle School Task Force, they indicated that there weren't any considerations they were making that would involve school facilities at this time. So in summary, the Westfield Village design will encompass replacing all portables with permanent classrooms, adding permanent PE and VAPA classrooms, adding wellness centers, adding pre-kindergarten, transitional kindergarten and kindergarten classrooms with restrooms, adding a designated science lab for middle school students and more. And our next steps, this year, we're going to continue the design and our scope refinement. We're going to refine the budget. We have to obtain our state approvals. We're going to finalize the guaranteed maximum price and bring that back to you in the spring. And we're going to continue with our school and community engagement. Next year, we have construction and more school and community engagement. And then in 24, 25, we want to welcome the students back to the newly modernized campus. And we thank our team for participating and developing this for us. And thank you.
Any public comments?
No public comments received.
All right.
Forward questions? Feedback? I know we talked about last time. Christie Pazadi?
So in one of the slides, you mentioned that there were primary instructor suggestions. Can you elaborate on what some of those were?
They didn't have any suggestions about the construction itself. Their suggestions were along the lines of classroom furniture, hooks for backpacks and other things that they'd like included in their final build.
And none of that increased cost?
No.
So the elimination of the two classrooms, I brought this up last time. How does that qualify as a student-centered I guess, student-centered approach to reducing the budget?
We see that as being part in the entire project's student-centered approach. By eliminating the two classrooms, that elimination of the two classrooms isn't decreasing necessarily the scope from the facility's master. Those two classrooms were not originally included in the facility's master plan, but we did include it in the conversation based upon what we're looking at currently, which we felt was an important factor to be, to be able to have a healthy discussion about where we were going to go. Instead of just saying it's the facility's master plan, we won't consider it. We see it as part of the big picture in the student-centered solutions to balance the budget. When we look to incorporate all of the other aspects needed to be in the plan, for example.
You mean it's necessary in order to have.
Yes, it is.
Beyond budget. I don't think it qualifies as student-centered because student-centered would mean not touching class. In my mind, no, that's just basically what I view. Do the project is, if you want to have it student-centered, then you would touch other areas other than class. But I'm not going to go off track. I'm just not comfortable with losing class. And I know that's something I've raised before, but I will go ahead and support this regardless because I know it's necessary because there's no other way to get to the budget level that we need to get. And we've already talked about what the what the capacity levels are and how we have 100 more spaces than what we need currently, I guess. But like the idea of building out for greater than expected, even more so than what we have. In case things change. So I've said my piece and still will.
Dr. Hildreth, you have a response?
Yes, I had a, just a clarifying question. I believe that the wellness centers is a new addition. Is that correct? So that's, and just in response, that's really how I think in our conversations, when we're talking about student-centered environments, it is our classrooms, but it's also spaces for, to address the, the mental health needs of our students. And we just have seen, our team has done research and seeing other schools and other districts that have wellness centers. We see what we've done with the RISE Center. So that's how in our conversation, I have talked with the team about how we are creating a student-centered environment, even though it may not always be in the traditional classroom model that we've had in the past.
Okay. Any other comments? Vice President Kirby Gonzalez?
Sure. I just wanted to thank you for adding in the pieces about how we're being environmentally conscious and for hearing that and putting that on the slide. Thank you for that. So thank you for that.
Any other feedback?
Nope. Thank you. I think I love the addition of the wellness centers. I had the opportunity of meeting with our certificated social workers today, and they're excited about what that means and the needs, because they, we all know post-COVID, and I know that our labor partners have identified this as well, that there are a lot of mental health needs, especially at Westfield, our highest, one of our highest poverty, under-resourced schools. And so they were just really anticipating, they actually, I don't think that, I don't think they're paying attention to when we're building this, but however, like, that is center and a core piece of educating the whole child, whole students, whole families. So thank you for putting that in. And we hear you, Trustee Pazadi. And at the same time, I think the whole child approach is about whole child, whole families, whole communities, and that is definitely a highlighted piece in this. So really excited about it. So with that said, I will move, and I'll entertain a second.
A second?
Clerk putting a second's all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have a unanimous vote on this. Moving on to governance. Dr. Hildreth, are we moving the meeting, December 9th meeting? The governance?
Yes, yes. Under the provisions of our Education Code 35143, our governing board is required to set an annual organizational meeting within a 15-day period that commences with the date upon which a governing board member elected at the election takes office. And so the date and time of the annual meeting shall be selected by the board at its regular meeting held immediately prior to our next upcoming meeting. And the board shall notify the County Superintendent of Schools of the date and time selected. The clerk of the board within 15 days prior to the date of the annual meeting will notify in writing all members of the date and time selected for the meeting. And so our board at our June 9th regular meeting discussed this annual organizational meeting, and we scheduled it for Friday, December 9th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. And it will precede our regularly scheduled board meeting, which commences at 5:30 on the same date. So we are bringing this item forward so the board can reconfirm that the date to hold the annual organization meeting of school boards is December 9th. And that if it is reconfirmed, we will then be able to submit all required documentation to our County Office of Ed no later than December 2nd.
Any public comments? Any feedback from the board and clerk's responsibility to report this?
Why'd you look at me?
Well, we're together. We're a team. We are united.
I got you.
So on the 9th meeting, so that's just the reord when we usually have our swearing-in and celebration, right? Are we going to have, because I think we have a board meeting the following week, is that right?
We have a board meeting on the 9th, and then we have our next meeting on the 26th.
Just for Chris?
Yes.
So are we going to have the board meeting on the 9th? Is that going to be more than just kind of a ceremonial board meeting, or is it going to be a full-fledged board meeting?
Full-fledged. So instead of having the meeting on the 8th, Thursday, the 8th?
Yeah.
We're moving the meeting to the 9th, and we will do the organizational portion at 5:00, and then the board meeting will start at 5:30.
Any other? Trustee Barnas? I'm sorry, that is, it is conflicting cookie exchanges, but that is legally, that's legally the only time that we couldn't figure out how to make it happen. So you're welcome to bring your cookie exchange here for the celebration. So, any other comments? If not, I will move.
Second?
Ah, clerk's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's officially moved and noticed, and the clerk will notify YCOE.
Oh, I got it.
Moving on to board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth, you're up.
Thank you, President Wong and trustees. I really just want to highlight joy of being able to get to schools. I was able to visit WUVA, and that really was one of the highlights. So once a month, the staff at WUVA has what they call their in-person day. And that's a day when the students come on campus for about two hours, and they have their lessons, and they're still away for students who are unable to come to participate virtually during the day. But just to see the students engaging, and you can tell they've made those connections and friends, even though they're virtual. And the teachers were so skilled in the work that they do virtually, and it's hard to believe, like, you know, this school has only been exist- in existence one full school year, really, as we were coming back from a pandemic. So the team is very excited. The principal, Amanda, is, loves the school, the clerical staff. So it's a school. It's just an opportunity for me to see what's going on and see the kids was great. Being able to be at Westfield for the Fall Festival and participate with President Wong and Trustee Pazadi. We are so thankful to our Rotary for that work and dedication and bringing the type of support that the community has been asking for. As I met with our PTO leads last year, that was one of the pieces of feedback that I received from the PTO lead at Westfield is, we want our kids to experience some of the big events that we know happen in some of our schools that are not on our north side. So to have our community partner and make that happen, and the rain came, but the rain stopped right at the right time, and it was really great. We had our community partners, Chief Strange was there. It was really a great time. And then, as I always share, another highlight for me is talking to kids. And so with my superintendent advisory, the first round at the beginning of the year, I, we talked about the strategic plan. So I'm meeting on my second round with all students. This week, I was with our Yolo students, and the topic is school safety, school resource officers, and dress code. And they have a lot to share. Their perspective is so interesting, because it's not always what we would think as adults. What is important to our students and more of their why is really impactful. So once I meet with the students from Washington Middle College and from River City, then we'll come back and report to the board how our students feel about the policies and practices that we are tasked to implement on their behalf. They're very grateful to have a voice, and that's the empowerment part of what we want to do for them. We want to make sure that they know, number one, that we want to do things for them, and we want their input. So we'll be coming back, and I'm already tasking some students. They want to be part of a presentation to the board. So that civic engagement there, they're great. I want to also acknowledge WSTA, just as Doug said earlier today, we have great conversations, and I think that conversation that we can continue is going to spread of when we're showing our staff, whether that's our admin or our teachers, that we really do work together and that we listen on both sides and know that there's times when we're going to agree and make it work. And there's might be times when it's not going to work, but that's reality, that's real life, and it's working together. And we're also working in that same space with CSEA. Like, we hear the concerns. We've heard about our health aides. We hear about the care that our nursing staff has for all of our students. And we understand that the advocacy is because we want to do the best for our kids, that that's very clear. We had the opportunity this week to meet with our Equity Task Force and our Curriculum Council, and you, if you need a pick-me-up, you just need to come to one of those meetings, because that's when you see the dedication of the staff here in Washington unified and the excitement and passion that people have. And I keep seeing that it's really focused on, how do we support kids better? Like, we do great things, but it's never enough. It's like, I always want to do that better. So hearing that from our equity lens, looking at our data, thinking about what is it going to take to be able to have some courageous conversations, which is very, very difficult to do at scale. But for me, to have a group like the Task Force who wants to do that work, then you don't feel like you're doing some difficult work alone. Our Curriculum Council had some great ideas. They're looking at the data from our CASP. They're talking about math. Really, how do we engage students differently? Everybody's looking at the data of, we may be doing better than some of our neighbors, but if we're not at 100%, we have work to do. And that's, you need a team, because nobody can do it alone. So these are just some of the highlights that have happened just in two weeks since the last time we were here. But we won't be together for another month, so I know I have a new veteran or an, another month, right? It's going to be in December? Well, I mean, as a board meeting, we won't be together, right? But we have Veterans Day tomorrow, and it's always so great to honor those who served. It has new meaning for me personally. I have a new Marine. My nephew is a Marine, and you just really understand the sacrifice, even when we're not in a time of war, but it's a sacrifice of people being away from their families and being on ships for months where you have no cell phone service. So you really understand that that is a different type of commitment and service, and so I'm truly grateful. And lastly, just want to hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. There's a lot to be thankful for, big or small. It's never too late to end your day. What I'm starting to do with thinking about at least two things you're grateful for every day, it helps you to really stay positive when sometimes things don't seem like they're positive. That gratitude journal is one way to go. So, thank you.
Trustee Barnas?
Thank you. This is one of my favorite times of year, the Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays coming up on, being able to be with family. Mine's far, far away, and I don't get to go home this year, so I'm a little bummed about that. But this community is so wonderful, and I'm so thankful that we have this district, you know, WSD, that my girls and my husband and me, because there, that's about it, oh, and my in-laws, have this incredible, tight-knit, supportive community. I love it. So I'm very thankful for that. And I love this time of year when we get to get together, and there are breaks, and you can stay up late and do things fun with your friends. I also recognize, you know, it's funny, because this time of year, I've started seeing patients that I'm doing, like, initial assessments, and one of the questions I ask the most is if they've ever served in the military. And it feels strange that I've always, as a provider, checked a box, yes or no. So what I've started practicing lately is to say thank you for your service when they say yes. So, and it really elicits a nice, a different response. And I think people feel heard, and I appreciate what they've done. I think we just never, as providers, think about that and often go, "Did?" Great. So it's been really, really meaningful. Back to the, to the district, you touched on the Curriculum Council update. I was super bummed back and forth between soccer practice. I didn't get to go to the, to that meeting in person, but I was on, online. And it was so cool to see our teachers talking about math. My sisters are math teachers, and really thinking of creative ways to incorporate the thoughtful, problem-solving skills that we know our kids have, but that are, can sometimes be hard to teach and to implement. So it was really cool to be able to see them thinking about ways to get kids talking about why math is useful, you know, instead of just dismissing that, "I'm not good at math", you know? No, let's talk about how you can, how you can implement math and how you can recognize that you actually are good and could be, could be better. So I thought that was really cool, because they're looking at really improving our math department, and I'm very proud of that. And then, finally, so I just wanted to talk, thanks to CSEA for bringing up again the the health and safety concerns. There were a couple of, I think twice I heard them say it's unfair, but it's unsafe. And so I'm hoping that we can have a conversation at one of our meetings, because now that we've talked about it twice, it probably wouldn't be a good idea to not have that conversation. I want to know what staffing does look like. And I thought that was a really good solution-oriented line at the end, you know, maybe a roving LVN or something like that. But I still think about safety and if there were an emergency somewhere, I don't know. I'm just, I don't even know. And so I'm curious, and we should know. Those are things that we should know, so it'd be good to have a conversation. And that is it. Happy Veterans Day tomorrow and long three-day weekend.
Trustee Pazadi?
Thank you. And I'm just going to pick up where you left off. I agree. A roving or floating health aide stands to be a LVN or health aide or whatever's necessary, stands to be a reasonable solution to a problem that, you know, is seemingly taken care of in other positions throughout the district. Like, there's district substitutes for secretaries and other things, but it doesn't appear to be that there's a substitute health aide position, which I agree is very necessary. And I think it definitely should be addressed. I don't want one of our health aides feeling like they can't take time off, or if they get sick, they're going to put somebody else in jeopardy. That's, that's not some feeling that anyone should have. And so I'll just leave it at that, and I hope that, you know, staff consider looking into the possibilities of something along those lines. Another comment that I heard was about the special ed class size, or not special ed, but the, the class sizes that have gone over and above the class size limits. And it got me thinking, you know, I know those teachers get an extra stipend for having class sizes above those limits, but what, what would be the possibility? I just want to put this out there as an idea, as a potential solution, of having a teacher's aide for those classes that go beyond those limits. If there's space open in other, in other classes, but not in that school throughout the district, and we're not going to send those kids to those classes, then why don't we provide support to the teachers? So I, you know, I just thought this was a potential solution that could be discussed through labor in our district. Let's see. I did go to the Westfield Fall Festival, and that was amazing. That was, it was good to see some of our community sponsors there, like the Rotary Club and the police and fire chiefs there and their contributions, and all the amazing food. Oh, my God. Such good food. And President Wong, I saw, saw you there, and, you know, I like the idea of forcing kids to tell us a joke or listen to dad jokes, which is really horrible, but I do appreciate that. That was fun. Let's see.
Tell us one now.
Did you hear the one about the cookie? That's okay, it was crummy. I think that's it. I, oh, I absolutely loved the dancers today. They were amazing. I mean, I've seen them before, because we've had them here before, but it, you know, it was several years ago, and I am just always so honored. And I am just always so honored and, and it's one of the best times is when you get to see performances here. Board meeting. It just, it makes it so great. And then I would like to thank our service members or people that have served in the military. And I, one thing I want us to think about and, and consider as we honor our veterans is when many of our veterans are deployed, they don't re-always return as they left. Right? There's many services that they need as well. And I know many veterans, family included, that did not return from deployment as they left. And so I, I just hope that we consider, you know, as we think about our veterans, think about the services that they need, not just honoring them and saying thank you, but also what do they need? So I think that's another way to honor our military members. That's it.
Clerk Vanegas?
Hi. Yeah, I'll keep mine short. I'll start with, with, yeah, thank you to everybody showing up. We have people showing up in person. I, I also do want, I know, me too. I'm showing up in person. I am. It's nice to be here. It's, it's, it's a lot. Trust me, the screen, I'm, I'm, I'm good without the screen. But, but I do want to, again, thank Mario for the translation. But again, just, just bring it to the surface. We, we had families here that cannot be part of the dialogue because of that language barrier. So when we think of equity, language, especially in our community, I think it's something that we just have to, every meeting that we don't have that available, it's another opportunity to disengage the, the, the engaged. I know we're doing a lot on so many levels and we do our best. But to the point of equity, we can, we can do better. And that's what I believe this, this board, this, this district, this community is really all about. As we were talking about data, we weren't talking about nationwide. We were talking about our students, like how can we do better for our students and not settle? So just every meeting is, is another either another opportunity or, or missed opportunity and that, that's on us. So, so definitely want to, want to say that. But also just the momentum, the momentum across the district is, it's less acknowledging for what it is. We have, there's energy, there's gratitude. And I'm, I'm working across the state. So when I'm not here, I'm, I'm, I'm in schools, working with staff, working with parents, working with, with our students. And when we have a project going on with middle schools and the, the emphasis is gratitude grounds us. It brings us back to the why. So it is, it's, it's a huge deal and just we, we have incredible momentum and just want to thank everybody who's a part of that and is aligned as a board, as staff, as a community. So gracias a todos. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Vice President Kirby Gonzalez?
Um, thank you. And at the Westfield Fall Festival, I had to leave early, but I was there talking to Justine with the city about the home run. And she had a good suggestion. We were talking about how can we make sure that our families know about the five twenty-nine college savings accounts? And there's, there's a lot they can do that are not just college. There's the trade schools. It can be rolled over to a sibling and, and whatnot. So there's a lot of opportunities with it. And one idea we talked about together was putting it in our enrollment packets that come out. So I know that soon we will have those rolling out. And so can we consider putting information about the West Sack Home Run in the enrollment packet that goes? She said it's translated in Spanish, but we'd probably need help translating it into, you know, Farsi and some of the other languages, Russian. But I believe that it is already in Spanish. So I think that would be a good thing for our students to help them get that. They already know if they're in one of our, you know, high-quality preschools, but there's a lot of kids that aren't and we want them to know about this too. Another piece is that Yolo County is rolling out a campaign, their Health and Human Services. I have some signs. Let me show you. So these are gonna go, I talked to Dr. Hildreth. She agreed. They have these signs that can go in front of our schools. You want to take one for your front lawn? Or to put around? They had, there was another campaign that was doing that. Oh, good. So you did get some?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Here you go. So spend time in nature can help reduce stress about sleep. There's just a whole bunch. But my point is you're gonna see them on our school campuses. And they're in Spanish too, on the back. So those will go out onto our campuses so that we can support that program. And yeah, the county has more. If you want one in your yard too, I think you can contact Supervisor Viegas. And in terms of the veterans that we're just talking about tomorrow, Veterans Day, we're, we do have our parade that will be going down park. It starts at ten o'clock. I'll be with the Girl Scouts. I know you'll be with Elkhorn is going. We have a lot of our kids that will be participating as well. I think Big Band and others. And so for the public who's not in the parade, you can come down at ten o'clock and see it. I know that Trinity Church is a good place to be. They have a bunch of vendors there. It'll be just a really nice event. Bring your lawn chair. And to thank and your sweater, bring your sweater too. And thank you to Assistant Superintendent Sam Moisich for your service. Thank you for Colin Malik for your service. And if there's anyone I missed in the room, thank you as well. And I think that takes me through these pieces. My board colleagues already touched on the health aide piece and the class size as well as that data comes out with if students, if we're going over our target numbers and they're not from their home school, as you look through that data, that would be good data for us to see as well that I'd appreciate. And otherwise, I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. I'm thankful for you all and for our community. We're very lucky to live in such a great place and it's an honor to be here and, and to serve.
My go-to mom joke. What do you call a dog in the sun? A dog in the sun?
A hot dog.
Da-da.
Jackie's was better. Kobe's was better. Take some notes.
Again, courtesy of our W S E D students, filling my mom joke bank at various school sites. So a really, really, really fun event. I will keep it short. Really just, I wouldn't be here without vets. People know this. I'm a refugee kid. They, they saved my family in many ways. And so it is always with gratitude that I honor Veterans Day because literally I would not be sitting here in this chair without their service for, and their fight for democracy. Right? So super grateful. Grateful for you all and this season of Thanksgiving. Excited about the C S B A, kind of spending time together at the end of the month and just because it's just we are, we just learned so much. I will be at three or four different workshops. Don't mind me if I'm not always in a workshop because I'm working it. And just grateful for everybody. I just, again, enjoy your three-day weekend and then a week of school and then a week of, like, off. So it is, we are kicking in high gear for all of their R and R that we need to spend with our friends, families and loved ones. So grateful for that and enjoy it. And so I will not add anything else because I missed the curriculum committee, curriculum committee meeting. And excited to see what kid, the kids say about the dress code because, and I think it's, I, I, I believe it'll be just a standing annual item. Okay. Gotcha. All right. Moving on to future board agenda items, annual reorganization meeting, December ninth, twenty twenty-two. First interim budget, December twenty twenty-two, district office relocation, December twenty twenty-two, board equity governance, January twenty twenty-three. I heard two requests for presentation is intra-district student transfers. Right. And the impact probably disaggregated per grade level and school site as well as an analysis of the, the health aide situation. And then I do think there was also a school nurse, like overall impact of kind of our health services, I would say, and impact not just health aides, but the whole system. Did I miss anything else? I saw Vice President Kirby Gonzalez unmute.
I thought of one, which I don't know if you had been planning an update or not, or what that would look like, but it might be helpful to have on here with the staffing ratios. Especially as we look at adding our TK programs, that's gonna add more students, more teachers, more staff on schools. And so I don't know if that will be, what way that will look, but I just wanted to call it out first. We'll have a conversation.
Any other additions? Okay. Seeing that there are none, we are, we can adjourn. We don't need a move, motion unless you want to. Okay. I'm gonna leave that comment alone, trustee Kirby Gonzalez. All right. We are adjourned.